Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is called to order at 3:59 PM. Roll call, please.
Student member Vias. Ms. Armstrong?
Present.
Dr. Alhessen?
Present.
Mrs. Garza?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Critchfield?
Present. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed session agenda items. At this time, the board will adjourn to closed session, or sorry, adjourn to closed session. Open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. At this time, the board will reconvene to open session at 5:58 PM. For a regular order of business, Board Clerk Myra Garza will provide an update on closed session topics.
Thank you, Mr. President. The topics discussed in closed session were anticipated litigation, labor negotiations, public employee discipline dismissal, release. No action was taken in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. We do not have any replacement pages for this evening, and tonight, we do have requests addressing agenda items. While the meetings of the governing board are not public meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item, and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to 21 minutes as per Board Bylaw 9322.2.
Hello, President Brad and Superintendent Lisa and fellow board members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns regarding declining permits. My name is Kristi Rader, and I, along with six of my family members, are alumni of Mayfair High School. We have legacy with the district, and I wanted to keep that going for my family. We made a point to purchase a home in Bellflower. My daughter, Callie Rader, attended preschool at Los Flores and was approved to pull a permit to attend TK at Ernie Pyle. We heard the wonderful things that they were doing with the school, and it's close to home and brings Callie pride to drive by and say, "This is my school." We found out that she would need to apply for a second permit. I wonder why would she need to request it again? Callie's enrolled, she's built a foundation with the teachers, her speech therapist, and her friends. We love the school and have dedicated the last year to being Panthers. We attend and assisted with fundraising events, we purchase spirit wear, and we attend PTA functions. I confirm that I was the first one to fill out and submit the school of choice application. I was excited and felt like, "Okay, we're good, we can rest easy." Then the email came, I opened it up with such high hopes and immediately was crushed, baffled, and dismayed. We were denied, and the reason given, due to her grade level enrollment. My heart broke for my baby. Even with completing our intent to return to Ernie Pyle, we were denied, and it feels like a phishing tactic. I had been informed that due to her grade, she would probably, if I had been informed that due to her grade, she would probably be denied, I could understand. But we were told to, if we applied early enough, our chances were high. I would like to ask Bradley, Sir, any one of the board members, or anyone in the district to investigate why she was denied, and please reconsider her application. I have listened to the board meetings, and I hear a repetitive conversation around declining enrollment, and I respect the decisions on how you guys choose to run the district. I am here hoping to open a conversation and shed some light on a larger problem, declining permits. You need students, and you have two students right here, Anna and Callie, who have been denied their permits at their school of choice. If we are not approved, please do not take this as a bullying tactic. I will move her over to the ABC School District, where they are currently accepting applications, and I have already met with their team, and they can guarantee that she will remain at the same school as long as she's in that district. That is a 13-year commitment to another school district, and we will not be back to Bellflower. And your declining enrollment will now become a retention and a PR problem, as we will share it with all of our neighbors and our friends, everything that has happened. Please do not rip Callie away from her school and her friends. She has been given the tools to thrive and build lifelong friendships there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any corrections for this evening's agenda?
We do not.
At this time, I'd like to call Ernie Pyle Principal, Ms. Jessica Cummings, to lead us in the flag salute.
Tonight, I'm actually going to invite Callie Rader.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. As the legends, flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, equality, justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you, you did great. And tonight, Ms. Cummings will give an inspirational message and share the highlights from this month's boardroom bulletin board.
We have teacher Kimberly McElborg, who will be doing our inspirational message for us.
All right.
Good evening. I chose a poem to read to you. It's called "The Value of Play" by Lori Monopoly. We say that we love our children and are concerned that they learn today. As am I, that's why I'm providing a variety of kinds of play. We're asking, what's the value of having our children play? Our daughter's creating a tower? Well, she may be a builder one day. We're asking the value of blocks and sand and clay? Our children are solving problems. They will use this skill every day. We're saying that we don't want our sons to play in a silly way. He's learning to cuddle a doll? Well, he may be a father one day. We're questioning the learning centers, they just look like useless play. Our children are making choices, they will be on their own one day. We're worried our children aren't learning, and later that we'll have to pay. They're learning a pattern of learning, for they'll always be learners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Critchfield, members of the board, interim Superintendent Mrs. Acevedo, members of the cabinet, students, families, and members of the public. It is a privilege to be here this evening to present the Ernie Pyle Bulletin Board to you. This month, we would like to highlight our mathematics program at Ernie Pyle. All teachers on campus from TK through 6th grade are using the district-adopted curriculum and following the California State Mathematical Standards to guide our students to achieve proficiency in math. One of the LCAP goals for Bellflower is to provide all students with a guaranteed viable curriculum through effective, data-driven instructional practices. At Ernie Pyle Elementary School, data drives our instructional practices. Teachers meet in professional learning communities to determine common assessments, evaluate data, find student successes and challenges, and form RTI groups to support struggling learners and to accelerate those advanced learners. Teachers infuse direct-interactive instruction in their lessons, aligned to the California State Content Standards, and include thinking maps when appropriate to help identify patterns and relationships, and use as a visual tool to understand the concept being developed. All students use our technology-based platform of ST Math, which is a visual instructional program that leverages the brain's innate spatial-temporal reasoning ability to solve mathematical problems. ST Math has a unique approach that provides students with equitable access to learning through challenging puzzles, non-routine problem-solving, and formative feedback that only allows students to progress when Gigi the Penguin travels successfully across the screen. Prizes and celebrations for students' math success and growth serve as a motivation to our students and help us in our journey of our goal of having all students become proficient in math. We already have 41 students who have met 100% of their math goal for this year, and 48 students at the 66th percentile. This Friday, we will be having a popsicle party to celebrate students who are on track, and Gigi the Penguin will be at our school to help celebrate those math successes. The information on the bulletin board showcases our supports that are available at school for teachers and students. On the top of the board, the Fall NWEA scores for the all-students category was in the 43rd percentile for achievement, and our Winter scores showed a growth in achievement to the 46th percentile. This data shows that Ernie Pyle students are at the 53rd percentile for growth between these two tests. On the bottom of the bulletin board, we have samples of student work spanning from TK through 6th grade showcasing the math skills and the continuum of complexity of math for our students. If you have time, please stop by the bulletin board and scan the QR code so you can see some of our learning in action. I would like to extend my appreciation to the leadership team for participating in our brainstorming session to decide what we should showcase, my gratitude to the teachers who shared their students' work with us, and to those who allowed us to record their lessons, and a huge thank you to our instructional TOSA, Cynthia Acosta, who brought our vision to life. Thank you for allowing me to share some of the positively amazing work that our teachers and students are doing on the Ernie Pyle campus with you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. It is now time for our student board reporters representing Bellflower High School, Ms.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, President Critchfield, members of the board, superintendent, and honored guest. My name is Trista Peterson, I am a senior at Bellflower High School, and I thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I want to start off with our recap of a Spring Fest 2024. We invited staff, students, and members of the community to join our event. Each table provided a different experience, whether it was food, games, or any kind of activity, and overall, this fundraiser was a big success for both of our clubs and organizations. Next up, we have our ensemble tour, which took place the week before our spring break. They were allowed to perform at many different schools, events, studios, and took a visit to the Texas Capitol. Within this past week, we've been showing our appreciation for our school librarians and assistant principals. In honor of both National Assistant Principals Week and National School Librarian Day, we've posted on our school Instagram, showing them our love and appreciation for all the hard work they do around our campuses. Prom is right around the corner for our juniors and seniors, and this year's prom theme will be Garden of the Gods. Our theme inspiration is from a Greek garden. We have started off with our prom reveal and fashion show. The fashion show helps showcase some of our prom dresses that will be in our prom boutique, and some of the tuxes from Friar Tux. As we get a little closer to prom, we will have our prom square week and lunch events for the prom royal court. And moving forward, next Tuesday, April 16th, our school is hosting a game night with Bingo, and our special guest speaker will be our principal, Mr. Lundgren. Students that participate will have an opportunity to win a free middle or high school yearbook. And last but not least, we have our middle school dance with their theme Tropical Loo on Wednesday, April 24th. There will be food, beverages, and a DJ. Tickets have already gone on sale and can be purchased for free with an ASB card or $5 without. Here are our social medias and ways to stay updated. I thank you all for your attention and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Trista. Great job, as always. And representing Mayfair High School is Riley Starks, who's substituting for Lennox Scott tonight. Welcome, Riley.
Thank you. Good evening, President Critchfield, members of the board, Superintendent Acevedo, and other district colleagues. It is a pleasure to present for you all. I'm Riley Starks, and I'm filling in for Lennox, he has a volleyball game today. For starters, spring has officially sprung. These beautiful pictures were taken at our nation's capital and in New York, where we were lucky enough to experience their cherry blossom bloom season. But the signs of spring are here as well, with the warming weather like today and our enjoyable break from the rain. Over spring break, we celebrated Vice Principals Week. At Mayfair, we are so grateful for Ms. Lane, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Denman. There was also a group of 28 students who, due to COVID, had their original trip canceled, but they were able to visit Washington DC and New York over spring break. I had the honor of being a part of this trip, and it was an amazing experience. One of the highlights was the photo on the right bottom, and it was an event called the Honor Flight, and we got to welcome veterans to their own memorial for the first time, and then get to know them for a bit. Also, during spring break, a group of students from across the district participated in a Skills USA competition, and they did very well. Another trip that took place during spring break was the overseas trip taken by the students from MAP and members of our French and Spanish club. They visited Paris and Barcelona. Currently, at Mayfair, we are in the middle of state testing. Unique about our campus is during state testing, those actively testing are the only ones on campus, whereas those who aren't have a late start. Operating this schedule is a campus-wide effort with all departments and teachers involved, with two teachers in each of our testing rooms. This schedule has allowed us to finish testing faster while avoiding testing fatigue. We are hoping to exceed our completion percentage of last year's 95%. Last year, we improved all areas, and we are hoping to continue improving further this year. Happening now and soon on our campus is our continued testing, which will end next Wednesday, an assembly taking place on the 19th, our end-of-year activities such as upcoming awards and our recognition events, and the beginning of AP testing, future college announcements, and our upcoming Met Gala-themed prom happening on May 3rd. It's been a pleasure to share what's going on at our campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. And representing Somerset High School, Julian Becerra, who is substituting for Sierra Ridgeway. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Hello, President Clinchfield, members of the board, superintendent, Ms. Acevedo, members of the cabinet, and to all my guests in the audience. Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Julian Becerra, and I am a junior at Somerset High School. Here's what's been going on at Somerset. Last month, Somerset held its annual career fair, and again, it was a huge success. The weather was beautiful, and the students were able to speak with a number of career professionals from various industries and companies, such as Compass Real Estate, Downing Federal Credit Union, the paralegal industry, LA Job Corps, Bellflower Parks and Recreation, and Norwalk Public Safety. Also in attendance at the career fair were two branches of the military, the Marines and the Navy. Representatives from Cerritos College, Long Beach City College, Long Beach City State, Cal State Dominguez Hills, and UCLA were attended here. Somerset would like to thank our superintendent, Ms. Acevedo, and board president, Mr. Clinchfield, sorry, for their support, as you can see in the photo at the top left with one of our student board members, Karina Vales Torres, and our principal, Mr. Higgins. Also, Somerset was delighted to have, from one of our graduates in 2015, Carla Lopezi. She returned back in this career fair. There you can see Carla in the photo on the bottom left, along with her husband. Carla went from Somerset to Cerritos College, and she is now attending UCLA, and she will be entering medical school. Her story and journey was, and her success was a huge inspiration for the students at Also, I would like to give a congratulations to our Somerset senior, Joseph Arroyo, who earned a bronze medal at Skills USA competition last week in Ontario, California. Joseph, under the guidance of Somerset CAD and Calab's teacher, Mr. Julio Guzman, demonstrated his knowledge and skills in the area of telecommunication cabling. There you see Joseph in the photo on the left, standing on the right, on the winner's platform. In the photo on the right, there is Joseph standing next to Mr. Julio Guzman. Again, great job, Joseph, you did great. For upcoming events, for upcoming events on this week, on April 22nd, there will be Spirit Week. Somerset ASB will be sponsoring a week of fun activities for the students. The last block of the year, Block Eight, will begin on May 6th. Spring awards will be held on May 8th at Bellflower Civic Center. The last holiday of the year is Memorial Day on May 27th, in which we will honor our fallen heroes. This year, Somerset students will be attending Grand Night at Universal Studios Hollywood on May 29th, and the following Monday, on June 3rd, is Somerset's graduation at Ron Yari Stadium. Congratulations to all graduates. This concludes my report this evening. Again, my name is Julian, it was a pleasure to be in here, and I have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Julian. Great job, all three of you, and you know how this spiel goes at this point. You're more than welcome to stick with us the rest of the night, but I'm sure you have studies to attend to, so you're free to leave now if you don't want to hang out for the whole time. Up to you. And now it's time for our BTA, CSA, and PTA communications. CSA does not have a report. Can BTA President Carrie McDaniel come on down?
Thank you. Good evening, interim superintendent, Mrs. Acevedo, board president, Brad Critchfield, board members, cabinet, and members in the audience. Spring is here, teachers across the district returned on Monday from spring break. We're headed into testing season. Elementary open houses are later this month. BTA has the WHO Awards, where we'll be honoring ILC teacher Jackie Kimmel for her commitment to BTA, CTA, and NEA. The month of May brings Teacher Appreciation Week and the California Day of the Teacher, and then it's June with graduations and promotions. It'll be a busy eight weeks for our teachers, for all of us, really. As BTA president, I was elected to represent the teachers in our district. I want to be a leader that our teachers can trust and can talk to me about their concerns, and I'll work my hardest to find answers or highlight concerns that need more attention. A few weeks ago, I stood here and read a letter that I was told represented the whole Washington staff. I came to find out that that wasn't the case, and why you may not remember the specifics of the letter, I do want to live up to the Sounes motto and own my actions. I met with Mrs. Arroyo and apologized to her. Being a leader also means having tough conversations and admitting that what you originally thought was a voice of a whole quickly became the voice of a few, and that changed the whole context of the situation. I'd also like to talk about the buyback days. I appreciate the time in the last few weeks that Mrs. Acevedo, Mrs. Carter, Dr. Reyes, and probably countless other district staff has given to gathering feedback on how to make those buyback days valuable to all of parties. As instructional specialist TOSA, I attended a meeting here in the boardroom with my principal and AP, and had a really good discussion with all the sites and representatives of all stakeholder groups about what we would like to see offered. It was followed up by a meeting on Tuesday with our alliance team, and the team quickly came to realize that there are many moving parts to make those days possible. But we know that this is an investment in making BUSD a better team, and I hope that I look forward to looking to seeing how they turn out. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Carrie. It is now time for PTA's communication. Can PTA President, Ms. Linda Morgan, please come forward?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Board President Critchfield, board members, interim superintendent, Ms. Acevedo, cabinet members, teachers, staff, and community members. I just wanted to take a brief moment again to share a few photos and some information on behalf of all our PTAs. I have it? Okay, that works. So, little bit of information, PTA stands for Parent-Teacher Association, and we're a group of very dedicated volunteers, parents, teachers, guardians, staff, administrators, and students. We were established in, Bellflower Council PTA specifically, was established in 1944, which means this year we'll be celebrating 80 years of working on behalf of and advocating for all of our students in BUSD. It shows our mission right there, I'm not going to read everything, and currently, we have 10 elementary PTAs and two middle and high school PTSAs. And though our focus is usually, you know, providing educational programs, assemblies, family engagement, we also like to create fun activities for our students. We want the schools to be a fun, safe, and welcoming environment. So these are some pictures that were shared with me of our PTAs that held some springtime fun in their classrooms for all their students. And this is Washington Elementary PTA. And then, as Council PTA, we also get to have some fun. Coming up is our Honorary Service Awards, where we recognize and honor those volunteers that go above and beyond for our students. I know you all received an invitation, and thanks to those that RSVP'd, and we look forward to a fun evening. Another event coming up is our, what we call our Historia Mixer. It's on May 7th, and it is where all 12 of our PTAs will share everything that they've done this year. It's, yeah, it's a lot of fun, it's open to everybody, love to have you that evening as well. And, yes. Okay, so, like you guys heard, the end of the school year is fast approaching, and time really seems to fly by. So, Council PTA, and as well as our PTAs at the sites, most of them have held their elections and are already starting to plan for next term as well. Transitions are, can be hard, it's a little messy and very busy, but we're excited and looking forward to continuing to support our units, do what they do best, and provide all these amazing things for our students. And one of the opportunities coming up for some of our PTA leaders is the California State PTA Convention. They have amazing workshops and opportunities for networking, and it's being held in May in Ontario, so it's nice and close by, and we have about 15 to 20 of our PTA leaders attending, so, yeah, we're all very excited to learn and grow and continue to do amazing stuff. Real briefly, so for next term, on the right, you'll see our officers for next year at the council level, and then, just to kind of clarify, like, I know most of you are familiar with the PTA at the school site, but council does is we support all 12 of our PTAs that are at the site, and then beyond that, you have 33 district, California State PTA, and national, so it's a lot bigger than just at the school site. And I wanted to share briefly, besides, you know, the family engagement and educational programs, art is big for PTA. We organize or we run the Reflections Art Program every year, it's an annual program that we do for all students can participate in it. And so for those that are aware and like to plan ahead for next year's term, the theme is accepting imperfection. We usually try to encourage for students to maybe start over the summer, like a little fun art project, but if you're not familiar, just ask us, but we'll be sharing more as we go, as it actually gets closer. And then, we have some board members that are, also serve on the Citizens Task Force, and so one of our council board members was able to share some information about Proposition 28 and the art and education funding. So, we shared some of the information and encouraged our PTA leaders at the site to go back and find out, you know, all the amazing opportunities and programs that are going to be created with the funds. I know you guys are aware of it, so I'm not gonna, you know, read all that, but wanted to let you know that, yeah, we're on it too, and excited. And that concludes my report for the evening. If you guys want more pictures, I suggest, you know, you follow our units, or maybe follow us, because we try to share everything that our units are doing. So, thanks again, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. It is now time for the superintendent's report. Ms. Acevedo.
Thank you. I would like to report this evening that the district has recently completed the quarterly uniform complaint report, excuse me, summary for January through March 2024 as required by the county and as a result of the Williams Settlement legislation. There were no complaints received during this quarter in the areas of instructional materials, facilities, or teacher assignments.
Great, thank you. And moving on to our major action section, this evening is the 11.1 Adoption of Resolution or Discussion Items. Never mind. Time for Discussion Items, Ms. Acevedo.
Thank you. So this evening, we have a discussion item on the 2022-23 Financial and Performance Audit Reports of the General Thank you. So this evening, we have a discussion item on the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Financial and Performance Audit Reports of the General Proposition Thirty-nine Obligation Bonds. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Holgame, who will introduce our presenter for this topic this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. So tonight, as part of our consent agenda, we have an item, which is to review and accept the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Financial and Performance Audit Report prior to us moving forward with the consent agenda item. In front of you, you also have a hardbound copy of the actual audit, and we have Ms. Priscilla Flores here tonight from CLA, Clifton, Larson and Allen to present the audit to you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Flores.
Good evening, Superintendent Board, everyone. I was just going to go just review the report, kind of shout out the pages, just go in chronological order, and then you can ask me questions if that works. Okay, so. I'm Priscilla Osborne Flores from Clifton, Larson, Allen, as your auditor for the Prop Thirty-nine, General Obligation Bonds Measure BB. The first report in the report is the financial audit report on the Measure BB. And the second paragraph on page two is, in our opinion, the financial statements above presented are materially correct. So that's what that paragraph is saying, which is the best it can be. So, good job. Then a couple more pages. Page five shows that your fund balance is zero, so you have spent all the money for this measure. And then also page six, if I'm doing my counting correctly, the bottom line is also zero. That's showing the amount of funds that were available at the end of the prior year, and then all the money has been spent on these projects. Then you have some informational notes that I can go through if you have questions, but moving forward. Let me see. Okay. We say, we, we look at the internal controls, not in detail, but enough so that we can understand. And then as we're testing expenditures and things, we're looking at internal controls. So bottom of page ten says, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls, which is good job to your business office and everyone involved. And then page twelve and thirteen are really happy pages. No reported findings for last year and this year. And then you have the performance audit report starts on page fourteen. And so page fifteen, at the bottom, the last paragraph says, the results of the testing. The district expended Measure BB bond funds for the fiscal year, June thirty, twenty twenty-three, only for the specific projects developed by the board and approved by the voters, and that's what it's all about for this kind of audit and that, the proposition money, the bonds money. And then on page seventeen, the second bullet, we say what we tested this year. So we tested twenty-four transactions, because we're not testing a hundred percent. It's an audit. However, in these type of audits, we are doing a larger percent than we would like, say, in the district audit. And so we tested twenty-four transactions. It amounted to five point seven million dollars, which is eighty-six percent of the six point seven million that was spent in the current year. And then the very last, the conclusion on that same page is the district has properly accounted for the expenditures of the funds held by Measure BB. And and that such expenditures were made on the authorized bond projects. There you go. Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. Colleagues, any questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, let me.
I almost got it.
Oh.
Go for it.
Hitting the light and not the button. Okay. That was pretty quick.
Yes.
And, but I, I did have some questions. I didn't print it out. But in, in audit like this, is it, is this like the only audit that would be required for a bond like this? Like, we have you, you doing it along with our, you know, we get a report, we got, we were, we were getting reports from, from our task force that was overseeing it.
From the committee?
Yes.
Okay. And so what's the question?
So the question is, is this like, like normal for someone on the outside to do an audit like this?
Absolutely. It's required by the Prop Thirty-nine that was the way that your community voted for this money, and so it's required to have an outside audit on just the bond money.
Okay, and then, like if something was found wrong, like misuse of funds or something like that, what would really happen?
You would have a finding, and it would be brought to your attention of the committee, and so the committee would need to tell the community or report in the community. And then as the board, as the financial statements of the, of the school district, you would need to transfer those funds, transfer the inappropriate expenses back to the general fund or some other fund needs to pay for it, not the Prop Thirty-nine.
So if something had, if something was being misused during this time, it really should have been brought to our attention a long time ago, if something should have happened.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think our, our Oversight Committee did an excellent job, you know. I think I just wanted to just, excuse me, ask those questions. Okay, let me ask them more.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Any other questions? Dr. Sue.
This is just a follow-up. So our, but our bonds aren't going to be paid off till years later. Do you, this is the final audit, or do you do it on a regular basis until it's paid off?
No, the, the audit, this type of audit is about the expenditures and how the expenditures of the bond were spent. So now that's not bond expenditures who are paying off the debt, unfortunately, it's, it's the community money, so.
So this is the final?
This would be the final audit for this.
And it's reported then to the public?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you again for your.
I just wanted to make a comment too, because he, this bond, we, we had to, I mean, is it, okay, the question is, is it out of the norm? For like, if we run out of money for us to, like, have to go into other funds, because I heard you say sometimes you may have to go transfer funds, so is that something that would normally happen? You know, because I know we had to, because materials got expensive over the years, so is that something that's normal?
That would be normal. And, and also, like, depending on the projects, it's like, well, we're going to do this, but we'd like to do this at the same time. That's not in the list of the bond expenditures, so, you know, the money's going to have to come somewhere else. Also, when you, when you go out for the bond, you make the list of your wishes, and then it takes time to pass the bond, and then it takes time to get everything going, so of course, prices are always increasing, and it's never a hundred percent paid for with the bond that you have. Many of my clients, the school districts, already have issued another bond, and they just perpetually are issuing bonds. And that's depending on the economic and, of course, the community. But, yeah, not very often do I see one terminate and there's not another one already coming behind it.
I know with us, we had, it was one thing that stood out with me with this last one. When we built our building, it was wired, so we had wires all over the place, you know, but then as time went by, wires became obsolete.
Oh, yes.
We went, so it's like, had we known, we wouldn't have spent all that money on wiring.
Sure.
You know, that kind of stuff. But anyway, I'm, I'm excited, so I'm glad it's over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, you're off the hook. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to major action, our major action item this evening is the eleven point one adoption of resolution of intent to transition to by trustee district elections. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Wait, hold on, let's do the presentation first, right? I skipped ahead. Is it? Okay.
So, presentation will come during the public hearing. The resolution is just to authorize the process to actually get started.
Okay, so we do that first and then we?
Yeah, vote and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Okay, so I was right. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? No? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution then?
So moved. Second, sorry.
Motion by Ms. Stewart, second by Dr. Alhessen. Any questions? No? No questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Student Member Vias?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye. We'll now move on to our public hearing. It's time for the public hearing on Agenda Item Twelve Point One, By Trustee District Elections. At this time, I will start by declaring the public hearing open. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
So it would be appropriate to allow Dr. Levitt to provide the presentation first, and then for the public to comment based on the presentation.
During the public hearing?
So it would be appropriate to allow the presentation to occur first and then open the public hearing after the presentation.
Okay. All right, presentation first.
All right. Thank you, President Critchfield, members of the board and members of the community. My name is Dr. Justin Levitt with National Demographics. It's a pleasure to be here. Apologies for any confusion. I was sitting far in the back. I wanted to move forward because I knew our item was here. So what I'm going to be talking about today is providing an overview of basically what the transition to trustee area elections looks like. We're going to be talking through the rules of the process, the timeline of the process, and what you can expect and some tools for the community to use. Tomorrow night, when we have our dedicated public hearing only to this matter, we'll have more time to go into depth on the tools as well. So tonight, think of tonight as pretty much this overview. Essentially, what the board is doing is moving the process of how they elect board members from an at-large system, where all members of the board can live anywhere within the district, and all the residents of the district elect all board members, to a by-district or by-trustee area election system. That's where the district will be broken up into five equally populated trustee areas. Each trustee area will have a representative that must reside within that trustee area, and only the voters who live in that trustee area will vote on that member. Just for the sake of clarification, this will not affect attendance. This will not affect where children go to school. This will also not affect the board's responsibility to all the parents, students and residents of the district. And they'll continue to participate in district-wide decision-making. The reason why the district is looking at doing this is because of a law called the California Voting Rights Act. The California Voting Rights Act is a two thousand and one law passed by the legislature that makes it easier for plaintiffs to challenge at-large systems of election. Essentially, it takes the federal voting rights standards, makes them, reduces them from all of the complicated and complex history and intent that the federal law requires to a simple mathematical equation, do people of different protected class communities or different groups within the district vote differently? Liability is only determined by these mathematical equations, and therefore, it becomes a lot easier to prove discrimination within a local community. Because all you have to do as a plaintiff is find one election and the last, you can actually go back as far as you want and say, oh, there's evidence of discrimination against protected class communities. And because of the California Voting Rights Act, communities throughout the state have made this same transition. As of the twenty twenty-four election, there are over two hundred cities now that have made this transition, including about forty just since the last election, the twenty twenty-two election. In addition, there's over two hundred fifty school districts that have made this decision, and a number of special districts, hospital districts, healthcare districts. We know of a couple of port districts and other sorts of special districts that have made this transition as well. Essentially, once a jurisdiction, once a district has by trustee area elections, you have a safe harbor in the California Voting Rights Act, so it can't be target of any future litigation. And the cost of this litigation has been extensive. Before the legislature changed the law in twenty seventeen to allow the process that the district is using, every, every challenge pretty much had to go through the courts, and we saw payouts in the seven figures, six or seven figures across the board, including local cities that settled, such as Anaheim and Whittier for over one million dollars. And many other local jurisdictions in this very region faced six-figure, seven-figure payouts in order to comply. And it didn't matter. In some of these cities, the voters of the city rejected transition to district election, and in every case, the court imposed them anyway. And so if you think the deck was stacked against locals for making this change, it really was, and continues to be. In the latest lawsuit in the city of Santa Monica, the plaintiffs there have asked for over twenty-two million in legal fees so far, and that only goes through the Supreme Court decision this last month or a couple of months ago. Now they're still accruing more legal fees as it goes back to the lower courts. To date, no local jurisdictions ever won a challenge against the California Voting Rights Act. Now legislature, in its process over the years, has actually made it easier for local jurisdictions to comply with the California Voting Rights Act. For example, one of the things that they did was they set up a process for making this transition that was uniform across all jurisdictions. This process includes two initial public hearings, tonight is the first one, that are held prior to the release of any draft maps. These presentations cover the basics of the criteria and the rules, the timeline, why the district is making the decision, and offer opportunity to weigh in on neighborhoods, communities and other factors to be considered in the creation of trustee areas. Following these first two hearings, the draft maps will be released on April eighteenth. This is seven days prior to the third hearing. And this is required in law. You have to have the maps published on the website seven days prior to the hearing. And then we follow that with two public hearings on the draft maps. Basically, April twenty-fifth and May ninth, we'll be discussing the draft maps, we're making modifications and changes, opportunity to weigh in and comment. Following that, the law requires a fifth hearing at which the map is adopted, so that's the hearing on May twenty-third. And then we have a special step that's only required of school districts, because when the people who wrote this law did not look at the education code, and essentially, the transition from at-large to trustee area elections has to finally go to the County Committee on School District Organization to approve, first of all, this change from at-large to trustee area elections and the adoption of the map selected by the district. And so that will be held within the boundaries of the Bellflower Unified School District once the map has been adopted. So we're looking at dates in mid-June for that. This puts us on a timeline that gets the trustee area lines in place for the twenty twenty-four election. Now, to touch on the rules and goals, this is really the heart of what we look at and consider, both when we draw lines and review lines. We divide them into some categories to help us think about the difference in priority and order, because that's actually important under the new California Fair Maps Act. So first, we have to consider federal laws. And the groundwork for all drawings of districts and trustee areas across any jurisdiction in the country is equal population, or the one-person, one-vote principle. Each district or trustee area has to have more or less the same number of total residents as each of the other areas. So this doesn't use voters, it takes into account the kids, it takes into account non-citizens. Everyone counted as part of that twenty twenty census count is included under equal population. And we'll take a look at some of these numbers here on the following slides. This is also what triggers that redrawing every ten years. When we get new census data, we have to reevaluate whether we still have districts that have equal population. Now, they recognize you can't get to perfect equality, and you're allowed what we call the deviation or difference from perfect equality of up to ten percent difference between. difference between the largest and smallest districts. This is to accomplish everything else on the map. So don't be surprised if we present maps that have like a 5 or 6 or 7% deviation, but they do things like divide, they keep neighborhoods together, they follow major roads or other easily identifiable boundaries. That's why we want to have some deviation from that perfect equal number. Next, after equal population, is the Federal Voting Rights Act. And in this case, we're not looking at California law. We're looking at the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965 and Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act to take into account the needs of protected-class communities, groups that have historically faced discrimination or barriers to registration and voting. While race and ethnicity cannot be the only factor or just the main factor justifying a district or trustee area, it must be one of many factors we consider as we look at drawing districts in the map. I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like for our district as we look at the slides showing where we see different protected-class communities within the district.
And sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a personal privilege and step away for just two minutes, but please continue. I'll be right back.
All right. In the middle column, we have our California criteria. These are the new criteria laid out in the Fair Maps Act. And once we consider, number one, equal population, and number two, the Federal Voting Rights Act, we have to consider the state criteria in this order. And the first criterion under state law is contiguity. Basically, that's a really fancy way of saying that a district or trustee area has to have one outside border. If, for example, we wanted to take a little bit of downtown Bellflower and a little bit of Lakewood and maybe Cerritos and put them into a district together, trustee area together, that would violate that contiguity principle. Every part of the district has to touch. Second, we want to avoid division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. And the law defines communities of interest specifically as areas with socioeconomic or geographic similarity that need to be kept together for the purpose of their fair and effective representation. And traditionally, we can think of issues and concerns that might unite people together around a common need for a single representative. And this could be everything from maybe living in a specific housing development or housing tract, as small as an apartment building or condominium complex. Sometimes it's larger units, like an area, neighborhood that was developed by a specific, or you know, by a developer in a specific time. This could also be things that unite people politically or in terms of their day-to-day life. For example, looking at attendance areas or school boundaries, school locations, and trying to understand what makes the most sense for this. This criteria is where we see a lot of our discussion and why we see different maps throughout the process. Because ultimately, this is where we're going to see the most disagreement even between different ideas of where neighborhood and community boundaries lie. And so we're talking more about that as we go through the process, just to kind of move through this list. Number three is avoiding divisions of cities and census-designated places. There are no census-designated places here. We're talking here purely about cities. And we have portions of three cities within the district. And so we have, most of the district, about 75% of the district is in the city of Bellflower. About 20% of the district is in the city of Lakewood, and we have about 5% of the district's population in the city of Cerritos. And so to the extent we can avoid a division of city boundaries, we should try to do so. That means that particularly, this will come up when we talk about Lakewood on the different maps because that is actually righted about the appropriate population for a single trustee area. Fourth, easily identifiable boundaries. This is the principle that we should use major roads and other natural and man-made division lines that are understandable to people rather than kind of jogging through neighborhoods and putting people, especially in residential neighborhoods, that live on opposite sides of the street in separate trustee areas. Think of how much easier it would be to say that, yeah, if you live south of 91, you're in Area 3, and if you live north of it, you know, around Bellflower, you are in Area 4. That's the kind of principle we're talking about with easily identifiable boundaries. And lastly, compactness. The law defines compactness as not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. This is aimed at those kind of hooks and fingers and other strange lines you might see on a map. Keep in mind, these are rank-ordered. So if we have naturally odd boundaries because that's really where the community is, that's where the city line is or other reasons like that, those are justifications for those less-than-perfectly-compact trustee areas. Lastly, we have a prohibition also in the Fair Maps Act. And this is a prohibition against considering political partisanship, incumbency, or potential political candidates that cannot be used as a reason for or against the adoption of a particular draft map. And so that'll be, that'll, that'll, that'll come into play a lot when we start discussing the individual draft maps. As you'll see on our data sets, we don't include the partisan data at all, and obviously, all of our elections are nonpartisan at the local level. Lastly, other traditional districting principles. The courts have recognized various factors over the years, including things that might be important to the district. Those can be considered after and only after we consider all of those state and federal criteria. Things like future population growth, how many schools are in each trustee area is another one that might appear on this part of the list. There are other factors that you can consider, but they can't be, they can't be a bigger priority than the requirements of federal and state law. And so look at those demographics. Essentially, this is, just gives you a brief summary of the total populations. That total population of 84,198, that is the California adjusted census count that we are required to use in this process. That's what we're going to be dividing by five to get that population number for each of the five trustee areas. Now you see right below, we have total population, and then we, for our racial numbers, we also have citizen voting age population. For our purposes, the citizen voting age population is the key for the Federal Voting Rights Act. The courts call the citizen voting age population the eligible voter count. It's the population over the age of 18 with U.S. citizenship. And we see that there are some slight differences between the two numbers, reflecting the fact that, for example, the Latino community tends to be younger than the population as a whole. Either way, we see that the district is about half Latino, both by total population and by eligible voting population. We also see that the, we have a substantial Asian-American, African-American, and white population within the district as well. So we, in addition to those racial numbers, for that purpose of determining communities of interest, we also have, and I'm going to talk about the tools later, we also include a lot of socioeconomic measures to really understand the different neighborhoods and communities within the district. And we've mapped a lot of these out online, as I'll talk about later. I just want to say that, you know, these numbers never substitute for our own knowledge and community understanding of where our neighborhoods are, but they can be very helpful in trying to focus in and identify where maybe the boundaries are. So we have, we break this up, look at the citizen voting age population for each racial and ethnic group as well. And we do this in order to look at that Federal Voting Rights Act requirement to see whether or not it's possible to draw districts that are majority of a protected-class community. And Latinos, our first protected-class community we'll discuss, make up a majority throughout the city of Bellflower in particular, especially in the north and western portions of the city of Bellflower. So we have this areas that are in the reds and yellow. I know the yellow is a little bit hard to see on the map. Those are majority Latino areas. The areas that are in the blue and purple colors, those are areas that are under 25, under 35% Latino. We also look at the Asian-American and African-American citizen voting age populations. Even though we can't draw a majority trustee area by either Asian or African-American population, this gives us a bit of an understanding of where those different communities might be. So for example, we see higher rates of Asian-Americans living in Cerritos and Lakewood. And we see that a lot of the African-American community is concentrated right along the 91 freeway. And so these might be the kinds of communities of interest that we could discuss that may not be specifically protected by the Federal Voting Rights Act but are protected by communities of interest and the communities of interest criterion. Same, for example, with the Middle Eastern community. I know we had a question about that last time. And that's another example. If we know where that is and we can generally discuss that there's a community there, that was something we want to consider under that communities of interest. And so really, this comes, this is the core of defining neighborhoods. Where are the geographic boundaries of these neighborhoods? And we want geography, and specifically because we're going to be drawing geographic districts on a map. And so in order to make sure we keep the community together, we want to know what's the best dividing line between a community and its neighbors. In some cases, for example, we have, we're probably going to have, I think we're almost certainly, no matter how you draw it, have more than one majority Latino trustee area. So within the city of Bellflower in particular, where are the different neighborhoods and communities that need to be kept together? How well do the cities counsel districts, even though we can't follow the city perfectly because the school district doesn't? Which of the city boundaries make sense to try to continue here? Which ones are perhaps especially thinking about attendance or other issues for the schools, lines we could cross? And, you know, and I just want to kind of emphasize in our presentation, we have a lot of different language about how we define communities of interest. But I really, we really like the language of shared, shared issues, shared problems, shared concern, shared need to be kept together. And so we're going to look at different options over the course of this process, but I want us to keep that in mind for communities of interest. Where does it make the most sense in terms of those needs? So for example, we pulled out a couple of other measures from our list of socioeconomics. We have information in there, for example, on renters versus owners. So we can see where we have properties that are rented, particularly along the 91 freeway into central Bellflower, where we have people who own homes or own property instead. We also, on the, on the right, we have percentage of households with a child at home. And we see everything from one census tract where less than 25% of families there have a child at home to one just across the way where over 75% of households have at least one child at home. And that's, both are right in central Bellflower. And so these are just two measures I picked. We also have education, income. I think we, in addition to renters and owners, we also have single and multifamily properties. So where do we see apartments versus single-family homes? And others available to look at as well. And where you can look at them is on the tools that we've made available on the district's website. And so we have two different tools available on the district website. One of them is a review map that basically has full versions of the demographics that I've talked about. Once we get the maps, they'll be put onto this review tool as well. We like to call it the interactive review map. This is, this allows you to turn layers on and off. So if you want to see a particular measure, you can click a little checkmark next to it, and it'll show you renters and owners. It'll show you, you could turn that off, and you can click another checkmark, and you can see income, for example. And then lastly, our online drawing tool. This is tool really is an opportunity. If anybody wants to draw their own map and submit it to us, they can use this tool to do so. You can, basically, you create an account. And once you've created an account, you can make a copy of this template, and you can paint it in all the way down to the census blocks with where you think the ideal boundary should go. There's even a tab where you can call it statistics, where you can check those numbers. You can come see if everything looks good. And you can submit this map to us by sending us the URL, by email. In doing so, we'll draw everything that we get in and be able to present those as community maps alongside any maps that I draw as the consultant. And in many cases, those community maps either become or serve as the basis for those maps adopted because, as I said earlier, you know your community much better than somebody coming in and drawing maps. And so really, tonight's public hearing is our first chance to answer any questions you might have about the line drawing process and also tell us if you have any communities of interest or factors that you'd like us to consider as we get started on the drawing process. So that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And now the public hearing is open. Would anyone like, from the public, like to speak on this item?
Hi. Do I need to state my name? I'm Robin Moots-Balog. I'm a teacher at Mayfair High School. I just had a question about the election. So since we will be having an election after this process has been implemented, then two contested seats, will they be able to come from any district? Like, how does that process work? Because there's five districts, two are coming up, and then the three, the next election after, does that mean the other three come from?
So that's a great question, and I'm going to defer right back to you if that's, is that allowed? Yeah, all right.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that because that's a very common question, and I want to make sure to clarify that. So this is a rollout. Over the next two election cycles, the trustee areas, two in this election and three in the 2026 election. In fact, what normally happens is that if there, the three representatives who would normally be up for election in 2026, those three trustee areas are assigned to 2026, and the remaining trustee areas are assigned to 2024. This is something the county will do. And LA County is very strict on that. So we'll have two seats open this year and three seats for their first trustee area election in 2026.
Does that answer the question, Robin? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Jandon? Are you about to get up?
No.
No? All right. All right, going once, going twice. And questions from the board are fine as well? Any questions? Okay, got it. Dr. Sue?
Thank you. So, okay, when I'm looking at the maps that you have here.
Sorry, if I can interrupt real quick. It'd be appropriate to close the public hearing and then take board comments or questions.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's on this, okay. All right, public hearing is now closed. Comments or questions from the board?
So can I continue with my?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I wanted to ask, you had drawn lines on these maps. Is that similar to what you're talking about? Because there's, there's fine lines drawn here.
Sure, so.
So how are these lines created?
So I, so the red lines are the cities. The, those are the cities of Lakewood, Cerritos, and Bellflower, respectively. The fine lines are, generally speaking, either the streets or the census blocks or both where they're disagreeing. So these are the smallest units that we're going to be building up into those trustee areas.
So you're going to be using some of these? Like, are you, I guess what I'm asking, are you going to take a blank slate of Bellflower Unified School District, the district, and then mapping out areas based on the demographics you have identified?
So, yes, we actually start with the census blocks. So the district as a whole is divided into about 500 census blocks. And we use census blocks because that's the smallest area that the census reports information at. And, you know, if we look at the maps here, all of these maps are using the census blocks to report those, that information.
The demographics, you mean?
That gives us the population numbers, the whole numbers that we use to build up into those maps.
Okay, so then, from that, we would decide as a board how we're going to be designating in the way you described it, for example?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll present three or four options plus whatever we get from the community. And then you can, you can make statements, like, I don't think, you know, I don't think Bellflower Boulevard makes the most sense here. What if we tried moving the line to Clark?
I see.
And.
For example, because we have a small area of Cerritos that would be linked part of Lakewood.
So.
Or is that going to be considered a designated area for anyone living just in Cerritos? As an example?
Yes. And so that's a, that's a really, that's a really tricky part of the criteria list. Because we're, that's, this was written for counties, I'll tell you that. And in county, at the county level, they're thinking of like, well, it doesn't really make sense to divide a small city by LA County standards like Cerritos. So if we need to keep, if we, unless there's a really good reason to divide it, let's try to keep it together. For a school district perspective, it comes after neighborhoods and communities of interest. So let's say, for example, that we've identified, we do identify a community of interest that links portions of Lakewood, Cerritos, and Bellflower in that southwest corner of the district, southeast corner of the district. Then that's a justification, because it's higher than cities, for drawing divisions within the city of Lakewood, for example. But absent that, we do have to keep the city together, the portion of the city. So we have to first see if, you know, and I can tell you just by population, because we have looked at this, the city of Lakewood portion within the district is right at 20% of the district's total population. So it's going to be very hard unless we have community of interest reason for doing so, to divide the city of Lakewood.
I guess I'm not understanding. So Cerritos would be part of it or would be kept separate?
So Cerritos would be separate from it.
It would be separate.
Yeah. Because Cerritos and Lakewood are separate cities.
It depends on the map, right? So we're talking like examples of how we would create the maps, but.
So, yeah, so, so it really, and think about this really about those neighborhoods and communities of interest. And where the, like, where, what, what does it make sense to keep together?
Right, that's, that's, that's what I'm thinking. And because Cerritos is a small portion, I see it being as part of, when you're drawing the lines, as part of Lakewood, that area there, for example, it would be part of it. It would be separate, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be looking from a delegate just for Cerritos.
So there's a refining process, right? This is one of a few different meetings where we'll be able to see maps and then have those discussions?
Yeah, so, so our first, you know, think of, this is a rank ordered list. So our first goal will be to create areas that have the same number of people within them. And Cerritos, for example, is too small to have its own area.
Right.
So it has to be joined to something else.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then as we go through the list, you know, it goes down from there. And so if, you know, and so you'll, you'll see this when we look at the maps, I think you'll understand what I'm talking about more.
Good, I'm going to move on to Ms. Stewart.
Can you go to page 16, please? It has the online map drawing tool for our public and our community. I know on 15, page 15, it says ArcGIS Online. What website are you referring to? And is there an actual link in our presentation and one we can provide to the community?
Sure, I know we've, I know, I know we, I know we can work with the district on making sure that that link is in there. These are screen caps from there. The, the first tool, the review tool is from ArcGIS, ESRIs, ArcGIS. The online drawing tool is, is Dave's Redistricting or DRA for short.
So if I just put in DRA into the computer, I'm going to find this tool? Or what would I, like, what would me exactly, I'm, let's pretend I'm super not tech savvy, what would I exactly put in to go draw these maps?
Sure. I think you go to the district website and our dedicated page for districting on the website, and we'd have the links to the tool on that website.
Ms. Stewart, we'll make sure that those links are on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That was it.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you, President, Board President. Okay, so when, when we make these lines, I'm sure you're going to be looking at a lot of different maps. If those lines only include, like, say maybe two schools, could those lines be, be, be broken to include more than two school areas or something like that? I mean, I, I know we're going to be playing with lines for the next, God knows how long, but would that be?
Sure. So I think, you know, in terms of the site locations, certainly it can be one of our goals to try to have a good division of school sites in different, but some of that will be determined based on where the school sites are. And there's no requirement, you know, it can't be prioritized to have an equal number of school sites above everything else. But if they are well distributed throughout the district, then we can certainly do our best to do so. You know, I, I just, you know, there are some school districts where because of how they were built out, they have the high school, the middle school, and two elementary schools all on the same property because that was the land they got for schools. And if that's one census block, we can't break that up. But if there's any way we can do that, even if it means just maybe crossing the street to grab a zero population block that has a school site, that might be something we can look at.
Okay, and can you explain to me, like, like, by having these trustee areas, what guarantee does that have in making sure that we have appropriate representation on the board?
Sure. In theory, and this is sort of the theory, is that districts or trustee areas provide a better opportunity for both voters within each trustee area to have a meaningful vote for that particular trustee area. Because you don't have to compete against everybody from everywhere in the district, you're only looking within your particular neighborhood. So if there is a neighborhood, and traditionally, we're dealing with neighborhoods that had no representation or very underrepresented, then we guarantee that we're going to get a representative from that neighborhood, from that community. In addition, candidates who may not feel comfortable running district wide may decide that if they only have to run in a neighborhood they're more familiar with, they might choose to enter the race. And we see that in a lot of local elections, where if you only have to run in part of the district and you feel like you know that really well, you might put your hat in the ring rather than when you wouldn't if you had to run and, and compete in the entire district.
Well, let me ask you this. What if an area, like you say, just maybe they may get up enough guts to throw in the hat if they're just in their section? What if there is no one in that area that truly just, you know, is not interested in becoming part of the board? I mean, what's going to protect us from outside special interest groups from just getting an address and running? Because you know, it's, it has happened before.
Yeah. Well, if nobody, if nobody puts their name in to run for election in that area, then that's a, basically would be the same as your process for filling a vacancy today. And the board would have the chance to either hold a new election in that area, or it would be able to appoint someone who resides within that area.
So let me ask you this again. So say, for instance, if we know, because we are a small, we're, we're a big community, but we're small and we know each other. What can protect us from, from someone coming in and doing what I just said they possibly do? Like, if we know for a fact this person just moved into our city and, and throwing in their, throwing their name in the hat, taking advantage of a trustee area that's, you know, that no one's stepping up for, what can we do as a community to protect ourselves against such a fraud?
Well, I, I think, you know, I mean, you know, I, I admit, it's a real possibility, and certainly we've seen.
It's happened.
In trustee areas or in at-large elections, where candidates have moved into a particular jurisdiction not to run for school board, but to run for Congress and use school board as a stepping stone. And, you know, I think in that case, you know, you, you know, it's up to the community, particularly the community in that trustee area, to say no and find another, you know, maybe the whole community can come together to convince somebody else to put their name into that election. Because, you know, it's sort of, you know, you see who's running for office.
Okay, I know you said by every, by law, every 10 years, lines will be drawn?
Yes.
Would the community or the, the board have in, input in that? Or is that when the state or whoever does it, the county, just takes, takes over and we have no say?
No, in fact, in fact, every 10 years following the new census results, the district itself, the board, has to do an analysis of whether the current lines are population-balanced and still meet all the criteria. And if they do, it certainly is possible that you end up re-adopting the same lines. I know the city of Bellflower, for example, re-adopted the same council district at the end of its process. And they considered other options, but their lines were only, their lines were still under that 10% deviation. And they felt that they were still working well for the city of Bellflower, and so they ended up adopting the same lines at the end of their redistricting process.
And by law, could we do it before every 10 years if we so choose as a board?
So that's a, that's an interesting question. Under the new law, actually, districts cannot redistrict at all in between censuses. The only way you can do it is with a court order. And that's only if you've violated federal law or something like that, which we're not going to be doing in this process, knock on wood. But you know what I mean, is like, they've basically, there basically was unclear up until the new law in place on whether you could or not. And the new law explicitly says, once every 10 years following the census.
Okay, so I, I got two more questions. Non-voting citizens and voting population. I see we have the blocks that are, that are numbered, so, so the yellow has like 65 to 75% of the population or whatever, right?
So, yeah.
I mean, just, just in general, so that's a high population of, of voters, right?
Eligible voters.
Eligible, eligible voters. So how, because on, it seems like on, like Lakewood, Cerritos area doesn't have a lot of yellow. How are we going to, so, so that means like the, the geographical area on some trustee areas may have to be larger than others per se.
So this, this particular map, for example, is showing the Latino percentage in each block. And the areas in yellow are 65 to 75% Latino. The areas in purple, like in the city of Lakewood, are between 0 and 25% Latino. What this is showing in this map, for example, is Latinos tend to live in the city of Bellflower, particularly on the west belt, on the western side of Bellflower. It, it doesn't say how many people are in each block, it's just showing the percentage of the P residents that are Latino. But there may be some size differences between the districts just based on the population density, how many, you know, you have some very big apartment complexes, high density population right along the 91 in the city of Bellflower, as well as up toward downtown Bellflower.
And on Alondra.
So those districts, those trustee areas may be smaller than the one that includes southern, the southern part of the district.
Okay, my one last question, this is my last question. Could you, on page six, there's something, it says California prohibition. Can, can you give me a, an example of what that statement kind of like means?
Sure. The legislature wanted to prohibit both, so this prohibition actually started in the state's redistricting amendment, what set up the Commission for statewide redistricting. And it is a prohibition against the use of partisanship and the use of incumbency or candidates or potential candidates as a reason for or against adopting a map. So, you know, for example, a lot of states have provisions in redistricting that require them to look at competitive districts. They want to say, we want at least a certain percentage of our districts to be competitive. That means using that partisanship data to try to understand what might be a competitive district. That would be prohibited under this prohibition, because that's a consideration of political party. And another, another kind of big use of this, a lot of states, including California up through, up until the 2011 redistricting, used incumbency as a major factor in drawing lines, whether it was to keep certain members in control or to draw certain members out. I remember in 2001, there was a line that was literally drawn across the street from someone's house deliberately, so that they did no longer resided in the district they represented. And that's sort of the thing that was prohibited under this prohibition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. I do have one question. Explain what happens if members that are currently on the board get lumped into the same district.
Sure. So the way that school boards work, and this is in the education code for this process, is that the three trustee areas that contain representatives or, you know, the same number of seats will be up each year. So two seats will be up in 2024, three seats will be up in 2026. Typically, the three seats containing 2026 board members will be placed up in 2026. Anybody who was elected in 2022 has a full term until 2026. Redistricting or drawing, changing to district elections does not shorten any terms. Those members who are up for election in 2024, if they reside in an area that's up in 2024, will have the opportunity to run by trustee area in that area. If, if, if they reside in an area that gets assigned to 2026, they can wait for two years and then run in that area that would be up in 2026. Now, they really do try and, you know, you know, this is where this incumbency provision actually is kind of complicated, because we do use the current terms of the board members to assign trustee areas to election years. That's kind of required in the education code. And so it's not a random assignment of trustee areas to years. There's going to be a process where for, you know, our attorney and then the county committee will make the determination on which one, which, which year will, which, which trustee will be up in which year.
Good, thank you. Any more questions from the board? Student, no question? Dr. Sue?
I want to, I want to understand.
The question was about the LA County Committee on School Districts. Is that part of the registrar's office in LA County?
So it's actually under, I mean, it's technically part of the LA County Office of Education. The members are appointed mostly by the, by the members of the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, really?
Yeah, two per trustee area. And then some are appointed by regional, by regional districts as well. It varies from county to county.
So if I'm understanding correctly, it would be our, our LA County.
Yes.
Office of Education, their board.
So it's.
Would be looking at approving.
It's a special committee that is appointed mostly by the Board of Supervisors, that is technically under the auspices of the LA County Office of Education.
Right.
It is not the same as the LA County Board of Education.
Oh, okay.
This is the county, this is actually literally the County Board of Supervisors.
It's the first I've heard of it, that's why I wanted clarification.
Their jurisdiction is any sort of boundary changes between school districts, territory swaps, and approving changes to the method of election or the timing of election or anything to do with the electoral process.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Was there another question? Do you have one, Ms. Armstrong? Oh, cool. Okay, I guess we'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, we'll be back tomorrow night, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items to withhold from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You have that motion.
Do I have a second? Roll call, please.
Student member of IAS?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Hassan?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
And now it is time for board communications, and we will start with student board member Vias. Do you have anything to report? You don't have to.
Well, um, obviously, we came back from spring break. It was really cool. I just went home. Thinking about, um, you know, one of the Julian, when he did the school report. I was actually thinking of they're gonna help me. Well, she the Carla, she was um, she was recommending me if to join UCLA. So I was um doing my research on like how it is, how the students are, because you know, some maybe like, you know, troublemakers. Even though they still get in, but you know, if everyone was nice. Because I'm mostly like a really nice person, I get along with everyone. So I was doing my research of like UCLA, maybe, you know, earning a scholarship, looking for a scholarship. And I also was like, you know, doing roses, you know. Doing my arts and crafts at home, singing like, I don't know, like I always do, and. Yeah, that's basically it. I would, I it wasn't boring at the same time it was, but it wasn't.
Oh, it sounds nice. It sounds nice.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Armstrong?
Hi, everyone. Just to let you guys know, tomorrow is National Licorice Day. Guys know anything about that? It's it's a it's a national day, it's summer national day today, but I forgot when I forgot about today, but. I like licorice and my children, my little preschoolers, licorice. I have a little girl, she loves black licorice, so. I'm have to make sure I bring, I have a bunch of licorice I need to bring to school tomorrow, so. So everybody get some licorice for tomorrow. Um, okay, so anyway, I had a a busy. Past couple of three, four weeks. I was one of the people who was fortunate enough to travel with the students who studied foreign language. So I got a chance to use my little bit of Spanish, and yes, it was hilarious. And I forgot most of my French, but um, you know, traveling is is is. It's really so important for our children, and I'm glad that we are giving our children a lot of opportunities for travel. Uh, because and and what's good is that when they travel abroad, they really get a chance to 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 see things. Of course, that they would not normally see, uh, like how elaborate buildings could be, and then they can really get the history. And see how that history from that European country actually connects to the country that we're living in. And just today, it was so funny, they um, and we talk about reading. And and somebody captured a picture of one of our students that just came back. They they caught him in in the library, reading a book on Spain, so like, like, yeah, we got you, you know, got you interested, so. You know what, anytime we get a chance to have our children experience, uh, have an opportunity to experience travel abroad. You know, let's really support them. It's really expensive, it's hard, and and maybe we can find more ways to um, you know. Fundraise and make it easier, you know, for the families, but yeah. We were there um from the nineteenth to the thirtieth. And I'm not driving, I think they were trying to kill me. I was and and everyone knows for sure, I am a believer of prayer, because every time I had to walk up them stairs, up and down them stairs. I just had to thank God for my legs. I didn't complain. So much fun. No, we didn't. We didn't meet the princess. No, we didn't. No, we we.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Is there anything else?
Okay, well, and okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was just, anyway, and also when I got back, I never got my my bearing straight, but I end up having to go. To the um National School Board Association Conference and um. Lots of stuff on artificial intelligence and generative AI. So I I got a lot of good information to share with these tech geeks around here. And um, I'm I'm hoping in the future, we could really um make sure our children are ready. Um, to participate and be contributing citizens, citizens using AI, because that's going to be the difference. And you know, it's it's the difference, it's almost a difference now. You're gonna have, you're gonna be the person that either knows how has a job. The person who will have that job is the person that's going to know how to use AI. As opposed to some that who, you know, who who is not going to have a clue like me. So uh, lots of information that I need to drop in in our folder about AI. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Dr. Hessen?
Thank you, Board President. Um, I attended the State of the Address for Cerritos College. And I was happy to be there, made some great connections and wanted to share something that's important. I have already talked with our interim superintendent about being able to um bring more students involved with. Um, special ed disabilities in the dual enrollment program, and I understand that there is a class opening now. And we only have one student enrolled. I think we can do better than that. I think it's important that we show um full inclusion and equity in our students. Who are um trying to be part of the dual enrollment program and to be a model. So I think this is the first step that they're making at Cerritos College, and I really encourage that. We had a pilot program years ago that um wasn't too successful, but I think now because legislation is behind it. And in Sacramento, this is something that is really being pushed. So I'd like to, you know, engage our. Our staff to look into how we can increase that enrollment of our students. And it's basically educating parents, educating our counselors, our special ed teachers. Especially in the secondary programs about this dual enrollment uh program now starting at Cerritos. I also wanted to, you know, piggyback on AI policy. I really feel it's important for our district to be more proactive. Considering the latest legisla- uh, the latest incidents that have happened at two separate school districts now. And I think an AI an AI policy that would be really strict and students being aware of it may be a deterrent. That's happening, and I know there's certain legislation now that many Congress and Senate are putting into action. To prevent this abuse. Also, um, with CSBA, I do a lot of reading and find out what the trends are for our students, educators. And there was a recent article put out that students feel that they're less prepared when they graduate from high school for real-life skills. And this is has to do with basically knowing how to open a bank account, knowing how to write a check. Knowing the uh ins and outs about credit cards and how that, I mean, I stepped through and I taught my niece. Helped them apply for credit cards, showed them the purpose of it and how to use it. But many of our students are graduating, many of them are foster youth who are left on their own, need that support and guidance. And I'd hope that we can look at a program, a curriculum or include it in the curriculum where we can teach more life skills. For our juniors and seniors before um they open up to the real world and have some rude awakenings. The other thing I wanted to talk about, which I thought was important, is. And I brought this up before, and I'll continue to bring it up until we see things happening, and that's our student ambassador program. I have talked um to our student uh board members about it, and they're very excited to get started. We have a lot of already um key components in place, and I think it's really critical at this stage to support our students. Um, at different across sites to start this program. And with that, I think that's it I wanted to really bring up. Uh, I had a really quiet spring break, just trying to rest. And recuperate, aging with a disability is not fun. Um, aging is not fun. But when you have a disability on top of that, it makes it more challenging. One of the positive things I started doing is I'm working with a writing coach, um, so I hope to finish my book by the end of this year. So with that, I'll leave you with a positive saying, when we focus on what we can do instead of what we can't. A world of possibility opens up to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hessen. Ms. Garza?
Thank you, President Crichfield. Good evening, everyone. I attended just recently this week the service appreciation for Ariel Pay, um, as he is no longer a part of the Lakewood City Council. I also was able to attend the swearing-in of the new Lakewood City Council member, David Ariano, and the continuation of um. City Council member, um, Jeff Wood, so congratulations to them. I also was able to attend the Paramount uh City Council Reorganization. They have um strong leadership there of unique whole city council board of females. Which is a very, um, you know, it's different. Usually it's made up of females and males, that one is actually just all female. So it's really nice to see that. And then also, I wanted to make a a public comment. We all know what happened at our Mayfair High School, um, how it was, you know, some very bad choices were made by some of our students. Um, unfortunately, now we are faced with having to pay that uh damage. And it's funds that could have been used for our students. That we now have to reallocate and focus on making sure that that campus is safe. For everyone who works there and enters that building to be able to um continue to work there and use that. So I implore you, if you know anything, please go and um just say something. If you see something, say something. It keeps everybody safe. It helps us continue to use our resources. And the correct way and places that you need them. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, President Crichfield. Good evening. On March twenty-sixth, I met with President Crichfield and Mrs. Oscevedo. During spring break, during spring break, I enjoyed a trip to Cabo San Lucas with my daughter to my friend Victoria's beautiful beach wedding. It's always nice to relax and have fun with friends and family. My daughter and I went swimming with dolphins, we rode camels, we got massages, so. I hope everyone else was able to also get some rest, travel, or do whatever makes you happy. Vacation should be vacation, so I encourage you and everyone to put the phones down and not think about work during those times. On April sixth, I wasn't able to attend because of my trip, but I wanted to thank the California Teachers Association. And my Teachers Association of Paramount for recognizing me and awarding me with the twenty twenty-three Members in Politics Overall Award. It was great to be recognized by my peers. I love being a teacher and working with amazing students and colleagues. I have the best principal and administrator that a teacher could ask for, so thank you, Lisa Kirk, my principal, and Kim Chavis, my AP, for just being you, they're amazing. And I am humbled and thankful to receive this award, so thank you so much. April ninth was a very busy day. I attended the Alliance Leadership Meeting. We discussed the upcoming professional development days. We collaborated on ideas for these days, and I love that we are getting input from our BTA and our CSA partners. We are taking consideration our test scores, behavior, technology. We talked about AI, curriculum, and so many great opportunities to have professional development based on our needs and the input from our people doing the work. So I appreciate Mrs. Carter and Mrs. Oscevedo so much and what you guys are doing to prepare for that. Um, I also attended that day the Cal Apps meeting. We received updates from the Skills USA state competition. I just want to reiterate how much I love and enjoy being on this committee. They have an amazing staff, Mrs. Whitney, Anna E., Jocelyn, their entire staff, and our board members. I am on that committee with um President Crichfield. They just do such a great job with this program and for our district. And they are so organized, and they just really take great care of our students, so I truly appreciate everything they do. Um, my father was a construction worker, and he did not go to college, and he made a great living and took care of my family. My mother, myself, and my daughter did go to college, so there's a path for every individual, and there's a way to achieve happiness and good salary. And this is by far the best program that I've seen in our district here. And lastly, I attended the swearing-in ceremony for re-elected Lakewood Council member Jeff Wood and newly-elected Council member David Ariano. I am thrilled that these two will be serving our Lakewood community, and I look forward to working with them in the future. And I'm so sorry, but I just added three bullets as we were going in the meeting, so I'm gonna just really quickly. One, I got up today, I got an update on our playgrounds. Um, we started um doing them at ILC. There will not be wood chips, there's going to be a soft foam, there's going to be a travel path to the equipment, there's ground equipment, there's transfer equipment that can be interchangeable. And I know I've been talking to community members, and they are so excited about this. Our kids with special needs. Um, they are just really excited to be able to get on the playground and play, and there is a lot of equipment that they can use. So I just wanted to let people know, because that's something I've been talking about in my board reports for a while, so we do have that um equipment for them as well. And then, um, lastly, I I just, I kind of wanted to talk on the comment that was made tonight about the permits. I would like to ask if we could on our Friday memo get all of the permits that have been asked for and how many were denied. Um, that was heartbreaking. I went to Ernie Pyle, and I'm not sure why it got denied, but we are in declining aroma. And to me, we're trying to create a family atmosphere, and if we're trying to create a family atmosphere, our alumni are important. And their kids should be able to go to schools in our district. This is not the first time I've heard that, this is the second time. I also had a teacher from Lindstrom say that her daughter could not get into um that uh school as well. And I just don't understand why our employees' kids would not be allowed into that school. It's it's April. So I don't know why we can't plan ahead and try to get some of our alumni and some of these kids in our district and keep them in our district. We don't want them to go outside districts, so I hope we look at that, and I would really like to see that information, please. Creating a family atmosphere is something I have preached since campaigning and being on this board. And to hear that story did not make me feel good about the family atmosphere here. Also, the last thing is, I would like, President Crichfield, I can talk to you about this, but on a future agenda, um, pretty soon. I know we're having elections, we're talking about elections for our student board members, and I would like to have a discussion about that policy. So I would like that to be added to a future agenda policy as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Uh, yeah, we will definitely look at that that policy. Went to a bunch of events, but I feel like my colleagues on the board kind of went over the events. Uh, huge shout out to uh Jeff Wood and David Ariano for their wins. That was awesome event. Um, and also congratulations to uh Ari Pay for his service on the Lakewood City Council as well. It's been a pretty busy uh few weeks. So again, I won't go through all the events, but uh do want to say thank you to everybody for the well wishes. Uh, for my daughter right now, I really appreciate it, and shout out to Mayfair Wrestling, they got her a blanket and a little care package, and she just loved it. So uh, thank you uh for all the well wishes, and thank you to my colleagues and and staff and Lisa for all the good work you've been doing um this entire time. I really appreciate it. Um, that being said, we will, oh wait, information items. Does the board have any questions on the information items? Going once, going twice. Hearing none? If there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-six PM until the special board meeting to be held. Tomorrow, Friday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, everybody.